Good evening and welcome to the City Council meeting. It's five o'clock on April the 2nd, 2025. You can view this meeting on our Facebook page, Council, or Cox Channel 24, or at TGovOnline.org. Assisting the council tonight are Jack Blair, City Attorney Lori Doring, Secretary to the Council, and Chris Baughman, Council staff. If you want to speak, go talk to Chris. Chris is over here. He's got a card that you have to fill out. You will not be allowed to speak if you haven't filled out the card prior to the item being read. Please join us in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country and then remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the earth that we live in, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is Christina here? Okay, we're gonna have a moment of silence then, please. Thank you. Proclamations, there are none, no special presentations either. People wishing to speak on agenda items are limited to five minutes total per meeting. Public input is a time for members of the public to provide insight on the agenda item. Due to the meeting format, public input is not a time for question and answer period. All comments should be relevant to the agenda item and directed to the council. If you are speaking tonight, we have this wonderful timer in front of us. Green light means you're good to go. Yellow light means you have 30 seconds left. Red light means you're over the time and you need to wrap it up. Please keep the podium area, railings, and aisles free from recording devices and tripods. Recording equipment and accessories, including tripods, must be set up in the media center. As posted on tonight's agenda, certain items are subject to consideration and possible approval, adoption, denial, amendment, or revision. I call this meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Here.
Counselor Archie?
Here.
Counselor Dutton?
Here.
Counselor Bellis?
Here.
Counselor Gilbert?
Here.
Counselor Bengal?
Here.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Here.
Counselor Lakin?
Here.
Counselor Bush?
Here.
Item one, receipt and filing of minutes. A, minutes of regular meeting held at 4:00 PM on March 12th, 2025, and B is the same thing except at 5:00. Do we have any speakers?
We have no speakers.
Any council discussion?
Move to approve items 1A and B.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Items 1A through B are approved. Two appointments and reappointments. Counselor Dr. Wright is recusing on this. Louis Napoleon, appointment to the Tulsa Performing Arts Center Trust, and B Joshua Walker, reappointment to the Tulsa Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. Do we have any speakers?
We have one speaker on items 2A and B, Mr. John Huffeins.
Good evening.
Thank you, councilors. Peace, yes, peace. Thank you to our honorable city leaders, Council Chairman Phil Lakin, councilor, staff, team, Mayor Monroe Nichols, and our excellent security. We are thankful to the citizens of this great city of love, Tulsa, Oklahoma. It is a joy to be with you on the second day of April in the year of our loving Lord Jesus Christ 2025. Yes, appointments and reappointments. A, Louis Napoleon, appointment to the Tulsa Performing Arts Center Trust, and Holy Spirit, we welcome you into the performing arts. And B Joshua Walker, reappointment to the Tulsa Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. May we continue to honor our employees and volunteers. Thank you, family.
Thank you, Mr. Huffeins. Is that it for speakers?
We have no more speakers.
Any council discussion?
Move for approval of 2A and 2B.
Second. Oh, I thought we were gonna do it together. Sorry.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Now it's gonna be tradition during that time for you guys to suck on each other and vote at the same time. Believe it or not, items 2A.
Okay, and Counselor Bellis?
Yeah?
Got it.
Items 2A through B are approved. Do we have any commissioners who were just approved here who want to speak? Let me see, Josh. Okay. Public hearings, there are none. Mayor's items, no mayor with us tonight. Item B, consideration and possible approval, adoption, denial, amendment, or revision of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Tulsa, Oklahoma, approving the issuance and sale by the trustees of the Tulsa Municipal Airport Trust of one or more series of revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $500 million to be designated as trustees of the Tulsa Municipal Airport Trust Revenue Bonds Series 2025, approving execution of the Second Amendment to the amended and restated sublease to be entered into by and between the trustees and American Airlines, Inc., amending the amended and restated sublease dated February 15th, 2022 by and between such parties, approving the waiver of competitive bidding. And it does have the emergency clause. Do we have any speakers on the resolution?
We have no speakers.
Any council discussion?
Move to approve the resolution on 4B.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Item 4B is approved. Is there a motion for the emergency clause?
Move to approve the emergency clause on 4B.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
The emergency clause on item 4B is approved. The remaining items for C through P will not be read aloud, however, public comments will be received on these items. Do we have any speakers?
We have two speakers, first on item 4C, Mr. James Alexander Jr.
Good evening, everyone.
How's your arm?
It's still hurting.
Wow.
But I'm a tough guy.
I know you are.
Uh, I have a problem with C, and that looking over what has been done by the HUD Committee, what's been done by the mayor, what's been done by the finance department, and everybody else, Vice Mayor and everybody else, there is a problem with this item. And I shouldn't be the only one in North Tulsa to stand, be standing up here, but I don't care. I can do it all by myself and then everybody else have to pay me. You hear that? They're gonna have to pay me 'cause I'm going to sue. This money came in for a certain area. It was set up by the federal government in 1975. It changed because the people were saying that they didn't have any input on the planning of that area. The area here in Tulsa is Archer, Apache, Highway 75, and Osage County line. And looking at this package that has been put together by all you lovely people, it excludes North Tulsa all the way. And the only way that you get the money is through a sector plan. Ms. Bellis, you're a teacher too. Yeah, you're talking. Um, so, before you vote yes on this, everyone, there is a problem. North Tulsa is not getting what it should get, the area that I just spoke of, and it has, in the last 20 years, you don't even include the people. You have a meeting up here, which I was one of the only people here, but you're supposed to have two public meetings before this is voted for. You have to read, you have to understand, and know what's going on. I have done all three because I've been here since 1993, and I'm not going anywhere. You're gonna get this right. This is crazy, and it's illegal, and it must be stopped. If the city can't stop itself, then it's gonna take outside intervention. And that outside intervention is James Alexander Jr., 'cause I'm gonna get what's mine, and I live over there in that area, I should be getting money just like everyone in that area. You know, we have never had a council that did anything for North Tulsa. Ever since I've been coming up here, no one has said, "This is North Tulsa's money, and it should be spent only in North Tulsa." See, the Tulsa uses its shotgun approach. Just shoot it everywhere. And like I like to say, you got too many eyes in the fire and none of them are getting hot because you spreading this money's everywhere. This so-called choice neighborhood, it's set up for six years to receive community development block red money. So is it a choice neighborhood? I think not. And you have monies going to every other place. We need to get this straight. No. City Council, the mayor, finance department, the law department, needs to get this straight, and they need to do it now. Stop all this crazy illegal stealing of money. Any questions?
Thank you.
You know, we need to have some feedback when we come to the council. This is not a one-way deal. This is taxpayers coming to the city council, asking different questions that need to be answered. You setting up here using loosely Robert's Rules of Order. There should be some feedback with Robert's Rules of Order. There's no telling how much you're using the Robert's Rules of Order. Understand?
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit?
Yes, sir.
But what's the feedback part?
Yeah, this is a public, this is a public comment time, so you're allowed to comment on what we're getting ready to vote on, but this isn't a question and answer period.
It should be. When is the question and answer period?
You can, you can contact any of us.
No, no, no. It needs to be done in public, on television, and anybody else that wanna watch it or know about it, send it down here. More than enough time. I'm finished.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker on item is for H, I, J, M, and O is Mr. John Huffeins.
Thank you, councilors. Yes, Mayor's item H, a travel donation from International Association of Fire Chiefs, Missouri Valley Division, for Chief Baker to travel to Rogers, Arkansas, on March 25th through 27th, 2025, to attend the FORCE Conference. May we continue to stand with and for our excellent police force and support their ongoing improvement? Yes. Mayor's item I, a donation from Oxley Nature Center Association to Oxley Nature Center for two track chairs for ADA access on the trails. A little about Oxley Nature, it's an 800-acre park with trails and an interpretive center with hands-on exhibits and a wildlife viewing area. They have picnic tables, and they're located in Mohawk Park. And a few of their views regarding Oxley Nature Center states that, state that lots of land, plenty of trails, they saw people fishing, great place to walk, to hike. Now, the person said, "Great variety of environs, well-kept paths, and a well-staffed center." And another person said, "Nice nature walk, friendly and knowledgeable staff at the front desk." And Mayor's item, Mayor's item J, special leave-in application, Tulsa Farmer's Market scheduled for April 5th, 12th, 19th, 26th, 2025, at 1 South Lewis Avenue. It is great to see fresh foods for our bodies being provided by these farmers. It is also great that God has provided nourishing food for our spirits through His Word, the Holy Bible. Mayor's item M, a special leave-in application, Guthrie Green, April events 2025, scheduled for April 2nd through 30th, 2025, at 111 East Reconciliation Way. The Jewish community is making a positive impact on our great city. The gift of this beautiful urban park, known as the Guthrie Green, by the Kaiser Family Foundation, to our wonderful Tulsa family, is enjoyed by many. The Tulsa Jewish community is greatly appreciated, loved, and honored by the citizens of this compassionate city. Mayor's item O, special leave-in application, Downtown Midweek Market, scheduled for April 16th, 23rd, 30th, 2025, at Chapman Green, 600 South Main. A midweek market, a good idea, yes. And, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Huffeins. Any council discussion?
Move to approve items 5B and 5C.
Up, through.
Four.
Sorry. I put my mark in the wrong spot. Move to approve items 4C through 4P.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Items 4C through P are approved. Five authorities, boards, and commission monthly status reports from the Sales Tax Overview Committee on current activities and efforts. Mr. Webb, how are you?
Very well. How are you doing, Chairperson Lakin?
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. I wanna acknowledge that we also have Reverend Mario Johnson here as a mayoral appointee from the SDOC, and thank you for being here. I know that the councilors are in receipt of my chair report. I would additionally just highlight that our sales tax program adopted budget estimates by comparison to our revenues were two tenths of a percent for the fiscal year above our estimates. It's been a while, over a decade, since we've kinda been in this territory, so it's just something to watch. Some projects I wanted to highlight, from parks, remain excited about the Chamberlain Park Pool Reconstruction Project. Total aggregation of funds on that is a little over 3.7 million. We're on track for that to be ready and in use by pool season, so Memorial Day. Have not, don't know if we've hired a new aquatics director, but that's something for us just to watch from the outside looking in. I know we've had some third-party organizations, foundations, that have funded our lifeguard certifications and training, so it might be nice to put them in touch with whoever our new aquatics director is whenever that hire is made. McClure Park Slide Plunge Pool, after many, many years, I think we are gonna see a completion of that project. The Slide Plunge Pool is no more, but we will have a new shelter and shade structure that should be in place and completed by pool season, so that's, we're excited to get that long-awaited ancillary project to the McClure Park Pool Reconstruction off the Transportation projects, we, I think most, most everyone is aware that we have started the 91st Street Expansion from Memorial Drive to Mingo. Anticipated completion date on that is February 27. It's been a long time since we might be able to anticipate completing a project early, but by comparison to a lot of our other projects, we might watch that one and see if we get that one done early, and I think hopefully we will. Another big street widening project that we've been waiting for is gonna be the Gilchrist Museum widening from 412 all the way to Pine, and then there'll be an ancillary project and resurfacing from Pine to Apache. I think we're looking at a May bid date on that project. We'll see if that holds. I don't know that we've had a final public meeting to let the public know what the plans are, but May or June potentially, and then that'll be probably a two-year project. Understanding that publicly we're looking at a completion date for Gilchrist Museum of the end of '26, possibly beginning of '27, you know, that timeline of that road project, something to consider when looking at what the final date for the museum project is. Lastly, the formerly the Route 66 Experience Project, now the 815 South Riverside Drive Project. I know we've had some reorganizations. We've, the SDOC has been, has enjoyed working on this project or getting updates on this project from Ellen Ray. I know with the city reorganization, there may be a delay or this project may be on hold. Given the timing of the Route 66 Centennial, given the timing of Tulsa Tough, both this year and next, we would just ask that the council continue to monitor that. If we're not gonna move forward on the public art piece by Cry Baby Hill, that might change the timeline for the, for the remainder of the projects. But obviously, there's funding on this one from the original Vision 2025 package in 2003. There's additional sales tax funding from 2006. You know, we've been working on this for 20 years. It would be nice to have something constructed by the, by the Centennial, so we're hopeful that this will come off of its project on hold status very soon.
Thank you. I know we have one question from Counselor Bellis.
Yeah, I was just, so I was just wanted to check or verify. So you all haven't gotten subsequent to any updates from Ellen Ray related to the Cry Baby Hill property? Have you all gotten further updates?
No, we meet with her generally once every three months, but we were, we just wanted to note that
Yeah.
all three projects under that heading were placed on hold as of our last update.
Okay.
So, and in fact, I think I may have it, that was project on hold as of 2/25/25, and that's the, that's where we currently stand as far as we've been informed.
And then has the committee, I guess, in an advisory, you know, it sounds like there's some concern about timelines and how long some of these dollars have been teeing up for and some of those things. Is that something that the committee has, I know you're communicating it here to us today, which is super helpful, is that something that's also been communicated to the mayor's office? I know there's the report, but I wasn't sure if you had other?
Not, not, not since we got this update that we were on hold
Okay.
on, on that particular project.
Okay.
So, but we have three mayoral appointees. We had two new appointees that started, so District 6, Uriah Davis and Jennifer Diaz as a mayoral appointee. I think that leaves us with one vacancy for District 3, not that you asked. But if we didn't have anybody, I might suggest Krista Patrick.
Compelling. Who's that? No, I'm kidding. No, but thank you. That's, I think it's helpful, or may be helpful if you do, you all do have
Sure.
kind of concerns about going, "Hey, these dollars have accrued and are from a pretty old capital package." If you guys see a sensitivity around timeline, that would be helpful to communicate across City Hall.
We can do that, and then also, as a, as your District 4 representative, we're excited that they've figured out the sourcing for that reinforced concrete pipe issue at Woodward Park, so that should, what was slated to start, I think we were gonna have a ribbon-cutting or groundbreaking in January that's been delayed, and hopefully we'll get that rescheduled.
That is exciting. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilor.
Any speakers?
We have one speaker on item 5A, Mr. John Huffeins.
Authorities, boards, and commissions monthly status report from the Sales Tax Overview Committee on current activities and efforts. I'm grateful for the unity and harmony the Sales Tax Overview Committee operates in in order to produce this report. Under parks, we have seen backup documentation about public zoo improvements. An easy-to-imagine major improvement for our public zoo is an exhibit building and a chapel with a tall steeple with a cross reaching heavenward, acknowledging nature's and our Creator, God, the Father of our Lord Jesus Christ. This is a great step forward for our advancing trend-setting community, Tulsa, Oklahoma. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna split B and C, so 5B is vacation of the retreat at Brookside South Platte, consisting of 25 lots and four blocks on about two acres located east of the southeast corner of East 41st Place, South and South Peoria Avenue. Do we have any speakers on 5B?
We have one speaker on 5B, Mr. John Huffeins, and the applicant is also here, if you have questions.
Mr. Huffeins, you have 24 seconds.
Thank you. That's plenty. Mr. Tim Clark is highly respected in Brookside, Brookside's a beautiful neighborhood, highly respected and loved. Throwing that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant want to say anything before we vote? Nope? Okay. We have any council discussion on 5B?
I'm just tickled to say, approve the vacation of the retreat on 5B.
Is there a second?
Oh, second. Sorry, I was so distracted by the pun.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes. Sorry, I'm trying to get used to this new order of roll call.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
All right, 5B passes. C, rezoning application, Z7799 from RS3 and AG to OL for property located at the southeast corner of East 101st Street South and South Florence Avenue. So I've asked Nathan to come up and talk to us from planning, so that everybody's basically on the same page before we go into this discussion. Nathan has some updates for us that really transpired largely over the last 24 hours or so, so he'll set the table for us, then we'll hear from the applicant, and then we'll open it up for public comment, and then council discussion. It's all yours.
All right. Thanks, Counselor Lakin. Good evening, councilors. Nathan Foster with Tulsa Planning Office. So, Z7799, this is a rezoning request for approximately nine and a half acres at the southeast corner of East 101st Street South and South Florence Avenue. The request was to rezone the property from RS3 and AG to Office Light or OL zoning. That was the report we provided you at the UED meeting last week. It was still a request for a straight OL zoning. This originally was heard by the Planning Commission back in December, and after the Planning Commission made their recommendation of approval for the OL zoning, but before any meetings with councilors were had, a neighborhood meeting was hosted at the Jinx Elementary School across the street from this property that included representatives from the neighborhood as well as with the development team, where concerns were stated and heard from neighboring residents within the area about certain aspects of the project. Following that neighborhood meeting, there was a discussion about adding an optional development plan to the request. And just for education of everyone, including those that are in the audience about this case, the optional development plan is a tool that allows additional restrictions to be added to a requested zoning district. So, the thought was that there was some concerns presented by the neighbors that could potentially be addressed by a development plan that enhanced standards around what was a proposed office development at the time of the neighborhood meeting. So, the case was somewhat put on hold while we awaited the receipt of an optional development plan proposal from the applicant. This week, the discussion really started again. Following committee's discussion last week, we still hadn't received any development standards. So I started a dialogue with the applicant. They were okay with the idea of adding some additional development standards, so I drafted an original version of, of an optional development plan, sent it to the applicant for them to review, and they then sent back a version that they were in agreement with. And so, at this point, we have a version, and I apologize, I don't know that the entire council has received copies of this. I do have some copies with me that we printed, if it's, if it's something we wanna pass out, I don't, so let me, let me go ahead and send these down the line. So what you have, once these are received, you have one labeled Version 1, and you have one labeled Version 2. Version 1 is the version that was brought back by the applicant and has been agreed to by the applicant. Version 2 was the original version that was drafted based on the councilor's request and what we understood to be the concerns from the neighborhood meeting. To touch on some of the highlights that are hit by these versions of the development plan, Version 1 does have some use restrictions in it. It does maintain, though, the ability to do apartments as well as other housing types. The restrictions on use really focused on certain uses that just seemed maybe more inappropriate in the adjacency to the neighborhood, things like plasma centers, cemetery, airport, things that were larger institutional uses that wouldn't be allowed at this location, but all housing types are maintained as allowed uses in Version 1. types are maintained as allowed uses in Version 1. They were in agreement with additional setbacks from South Florence Avenue and the southern boundary of this property, which is neighboring adjacent residences. The OL district, just as a straight zoning, would require a 10-foot setback from both the southern boundary and from Florence Avenue. The applicant was in agreement with a 25-foot setback applied from both of those boundaries. This was in an attempt to address some of the concerns about privacy, as well as the scale of buildings that could be built that close to the neighboring residences. So that is part of Version 1. This also adds restrictions on any second-story windows. If a building were to include second-story windows, they would be required to either be of a translucent glass, something that only allows light to come through and would not be, have any visibility through them, or they would have to be at a minimum height of a six-foot sill to prevent, again, anyone from just looking out those windows over the backyards of the neighboring residences. The applicant was once again in agreement with, with those changes as well. Moving forward a little bit further, the landscaping and screening requirements in the applicant's version just subject the project to landscaping and screening as required by the Tulsa zoning code. So to give you all an understanding of that, commercial uses must be screened from residential uses by the installation of a six-foot opaque fence and one tree every 25 feet. And that would be the applicable screening requirement with just the base OL zoning, and that's what the applicant has agreed to do. For signage, the applicant is in agreement to prohibit dynamic displays, electronic message centers, any sort of lit signage. They've also restricted freestanding signs to monument-style-only signage with a maximum height of 10 feet. And then on lighting, there was a provision to reduce the allowable fixture height for any sort of parking lot lighting and otherwise along both the west and south boundaries. So any lighting within 100 feet of either of those boundaries would be limited to a 12-foot fixture height versus the 16-foot fixture height that is allowed by the zoning code. To hit on what the differences were, Version 2, first of all, does prohibit apartments as a principal use. So it took that use and excluded it from the allowable use list. It also added additional landscaping and screening requirements to enhance what the underlying code would require. So it took what was previously one tree per 25 feet and increased that to one tree for every 20 feet. It required a certain tree size at the time of planting, as well as a mixture of deciduous and evergreen trees to provide a landscape buffer between the residential areas to the east and to the south. It also requires a certain low-level screen along South Florence Avenue that would buffer essentially any parking areas and things that were out along the street shared with the residences to help with shielding of headlights and other things that may be in those, those parking areas. On signage, the only difference between the applicant's version and the original was that the monument-style signs were limited to six feet in height rather than 10 feet. So that was one change there. And then the lighting remained the same. So the applicant was in agreement with the original draft of the lighting restrictions. So that covers really what we're looking at today. We have these two versions, and I think the applicant will be able to speak to the things that they're in agreement with and what they've accepted as part of this optional development plan. But the request in front of you at this time would be that it's OL with an optional development plan, which has now been added. So I'm happy to answer questions if you all have any about that.
Any questions now, or you want to wait? Wait? Okay.
Sure.
Thank you. All right. Who's speaking for the applicant? Mr. Cottle? Nice to see you. You have 10 minutes on this. For those of you who aren't familiar with our friend Jared, he spent a long time in the city of Bixby.
Different hat these days.
Engineering and city manager as well.
Yes, sir. Well, Chairman, thank you. I will keep it brief. Jared Cottle, 938 North Country Meadow Lane, Cottle Engineering, and I am here representing the development team, and they are here present as well for additional consultation as needed. But just to let you know everything that Nathan presented, they're in agreement with on both versions. So if there's any additional questions on that, yes, ma'am.
So, thank you, Chair Gilbert. Hello. You said they're okay with both Version 1 and 2 of the ODP?
That's correct.
Okay.
They prefer, Version 1 was, was the original application, and they're certainly happy with that. But they are also agreeable to all the restrictions that Nathan presented.
The concessions on Version 2?
The concession, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for the developer? Okay. Just, don't go very far, because there might be some questions after the speakers.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. All right. Chris, how many speakers do we have for the yeses?
We have no yes speakers. We have four against.
Okay. Let's call the first speaker.
First speaker is Vinton Nar.
Good afternoon. My name is Vinton Nar. I'm the president of Delaware Point HOA. First of all, this has blindsided us. We were not aware of any ODP being developed by the developers. So we have not seen that at all. Recently, I sent an email to the city councilors expressing our concerns, some of our concerns with the rezoning, and felt the best use of the, would be for single-family housing. It has become apparent to most of us that something is going to be developed there. So we want to pursue the best possible outcome from our, for our neighborhood. We have pointed out a number of concerns, such as traffic congestion in the area. We'll set those kinds of concerns aside so that we can have some input into proposed development. So we would like to work with the developers and have time to review the ODP, which I just said, stated, we have not, we weren't even aware that they were working on one. So therefore, we request that you vote no so that we can be involved in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Sally Reynolds.
Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. I'm doing well. Hello, councilors. I'm Sally Reynolds. I live at 3630 East 104th Street. I'm also an HOA president for Chelsea Pond. We have 62 homeowners. You all can thank me that I'm representing them tonight, and they're not all here to speak for five minutes on, on this item. I'm also very much surprised about the late development of the ODP. We would request that you deny this application, and as the gentleman said, that we can work with the developers to further enhance the ODP. It is still not clear to me, based on what was said tonight, whether the multifamily is included in the ODP that the developers have approved or not. So for me, I think I would just respectfully ask that you deny the application tonight, and let's have time for the neighbors and the interested parties to review and discuss the ODP. We specifically want to restrict the multifamily housing on that site. Our neighborhood and our beautiful pond is adjacent to the southeast corner of that property, and we have trespassing issues now, and we believe that with multifamily, that it will increase the trespassing into our pond area, which gives people direct access up into the neighborhood. So thank you very much.
Okay, let us, let's get through public comment first, and then we can come back. And you can, okay.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Kent Olean.
First off, I've never attended one of these before, so I'm going to be a little rough around the edges on this. I live up in Silverchase, so I just live up the street from where the development's, where it's going to happen, where they're talking about. I always thought that the idea was that it was going to be light office. I had no idea that you could then throw something in like multifamily into that. So that's the thing I thought that we had pretty much agreed on or had thought about, that there would be like some overlay or some sort of protection. So if the developer wanted to sell the property, it couldn't go into multifamily. It's a very busy area. I mean, it's right across the street from the middle school. There's tremendous traffic coming in from 121st, all the development out south. So that's really what it is with me, is I thought that to do Office Light was a cool thing. It made sense. It made sense for different professionals in the area. But to think about doing something and not protecting the property that it couldn't be sold again and have a developer do multifamily is what's challenging to me. So I thought all along, there would be something protecting the property if it was sold again. So that's where I stand on that. So I'm, I'm for an light, you know, Office Light, but not for that it could be a multifamily development. It's just, it's just not right for the area. Anything else? No. I think you did, you did great, Kent. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah. I've, I've spoken several, several times. I, I want to, I want to give everybody the opportunity to, to comment, but, but the ODP, that some councilors are just encouraging me to say, you, the ODP is that overlay that you're talking about, that, that does allow us to take some of those things out that you wouldn't predict was part of Office Light. You know, Office Light seems like it's Office Light. It's not Office Light and housing and mortuary.
You know, I guess that's a confusing part to me as a professional. I understand Office Light. I don't know how multifamily moves into that. I could see that being a whole separate category.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, in its own little self over there, but to group it all in there. So that's what's confusing to me.
Gotcha.
Thank you so much.
And that's, that's the tool of ODP. And just so, so people know, also, a couple of you have said, you know, my encouragement is for you to deny it. We actually have more tools that we can use. We can vote for it. We can vote against it. We can continue it, which would mean we have more time to talk about it. Or we can remand it back to the Planning Commission. And if it goes back to the Planning Commission, then it goes to another public body. Another public body has to debate it, and then there's another public hearing, then it has to come back to us. So there's really four different ways it can go. So we, we can talk about that once we get into council discussion. But more comments, I'm assuming?
We have one more speaker.
Okay. Next speaker, please.
Our last speaker is Anthony Bertati.
Good evening.
How are you guys?
Good.
Good. I'm just a neighbor, and, but I do back up. I'm at 10115 South College Place, and I'm in Delaware Point. I back up directly to the Florence Avenue, and I'll be directly across the street from the development, the main part of the development, where the buildings will be. I guess I really just have three different points. My first being that as, as a neighbor, and I feel like all of the neighbors kind of just feel like there's a lot of confusion. First of all, I want to say that I agree with the HOA presidents in their, in, in what they spoke about up here. But secondly, just as a neighbor, it just seems like there's a lot of confusion on, especially here in today, that there's development going on, but we're not hearing about it. And just, just kind of not knowing what's happening. My second point kind of is related to that, too, is we had a very large community meeting where a couple of the councilors were involved. And when we all left that meeting, we were under the, understanding that the developer was interested in the ODP or agreeing to something like that. The last piece of information that we received was that they were submitting it as is and that they didn't care about the ODP, only to find out five minutes ago that apparently there is an ODP, and apparently there's two different ODPs. We really would like to recommend that we go with the, I believe it was the second one that did include, not including the apartments or having that piece in there. But now, after just hearing what you said, maybe it's more about, instead of just saying no, just extending this to more discussion, just to make sure that everybody's involved. And then my third point is, in Delaware Point, it is a, it's a great neighborhood, and I'm old, I've been in that neighborhood for a while, but I'm starting to see a lot of new, younger families. And those families are, they have young kids that are starting school. They purchased these properties at the values that everybody knows how much values have increased in properties. And I just don't want to see the value of their properties going down. And a lot of those people couldn't be here tonight because they're coaching Little League or doing stuff in the community. They just can't be here for a 5 o'clock meeting. So I'm representing them, just asking you to extend this or just do something to make sure that we're thinking about all of the neighbors and, and including something that's going to continue to keep the value up in the area and not, not include apartments. And I think that's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, no more public comments, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, Councilor Bellis, you had a question?
I think, I'm so sorry, ma'am, who was representing the Neighborhood Association. Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. If you wouldn't mind, I had a follow-up question for you. And this makes me something other neighbors want to speak to. This is just kind of a curiosity, because I, you know, I'm hearing the main concern related to apartments of multifamily, which I understand this developer's not planning. And I just want to preface my question, though, with that, you know, our, you know, our community in our city, we know we need more housing. And so it's something that I'm, I'm always really reticent to rule out or block out from a location. And I want to say that, one, just as a quick fact thing, and then my question's coming in a second, I promise, that, you know, multifamily is not directly connected to lowering property values, depending on a lot of factors that can increase them. And two, most, you know, most households in Tulsa are, especially in those types of, if it's a rental or an apartment, you know, it's one or two families, maybe they have a car. But I'm, but I understand the concerns, because it could be quite a shift if something like that does come into proximity to a neighborhood. My curiosity is, because a lot of the concern I'd heard, I think, you know, from an email that you had sent on behalf of the neighborhood and from some others, had to do with, okay, there's going to be, if that were to happen, my concern with it is there'd be more people, more traffic. I'm, I'm trying to understand, though, how is that, say, say you end up with something that has like eight units in it. So let's say that that's at the most 16 humans and one to two cars each. How is that different or of more concern to you all than the potential traffic and foot traffic from things like a daycare, a religious building, or some of these other services that are Office Light, kind of shopping, or, yeah, experience would have. I'm just trying to understand the difference between, like, people, the living in proximity to you versus like the traffic of people coming in and out for businesses.
Well, in, in, in the, in the case of our neighborhood and our specific concerns, because our pond is there, it's a private pond, we are maintaining it on behalf of the city. It is a retention pond. But we, that, that additional people, traffic and visibility into that pond is going to increase their inclination to go to the pond to fish, to cut wire, to go under fencing, et cetera. And they would be there 24 by 7. They would not be coming to an eye doctor's appointment with a plan to be there for an hour and to leave. So in, in, they would be sitting on their porches and thinking that the fishing looks very good over there.
Is there already a fence around the pond?
There is a fence on our property, and we have requested additional fencing, and I don't know if that's in the ODP or not.
Okay.
But just to block that from the...
So anyone going into that property would be trespassing?
They would be trespassing. Our, our concern is trespassing, and people do trespass.
Right.
They absolutely do. They cut the fence, they go under the fence. They, they like the pond. It's very, very nice. And there are a lot of nice fish in the pond as well. So I can't speak, I, I don't want to speak to the car traffic, because I think the car traffic is a terrible problem now. I'm of the opinion that that needs to be resolved in some other way. I don't know how much impact that would have, the apartment versus other things.
Yeah, thank you. That's helpful. Yeah, of course, if you had a different perspective.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. That's helpful.
I, like she said, the, the problem with the traffic is something you're going to have to deal with. It's, it's a, it's a bad problem now. And so whatever you do with that multifamily is going to make it worse. And it's, it's going to have to be dealt with. I met with Jeanne Q and engineering guy Kurt Kraft, is that his name? Four or five years ago, about putting in a, the, with the traffic coming from, on Riverside, coming from the city and turning left onto 364, making that two lanes, that would help get that traffic through there and then allow more time for the other traffic to go both ways. Where that request is, I don't know. He said he would put it... Where that request is, I don't know. He said he would put it, you know, get it in the, in the hopper. Whether that happened or got lost, I don't know. But the traffic problem is gonna have to be addressed at some point.
Right.
So it, it, it just seems like you're throwing fuel onto the fire. That's all.
Thanks. That's helpful. And I did also have a question for the developer, but I can wait. Oh, sorry. Yes, sir. If you had another.
So I just wanna say on the, on the first meeting that we had with the TPM or whatever, the other committee that approved it, they said the same thing about how apartments don't bring down value. But I guess my opinion or my thoughts on that are, if, if there ends up being apartments there for any reason at any time, most likely our neighborhood will just become a rental neighborhood. Almost everybody will just start renting out their houses to other people and moving on to Bixby or other communities that, you know, care more about the areas. So that is the part where we're saying it's going to potentially ruin the values because of what the reaction is gonna be from the neighborhood. Second, you said something about eight units or something compared to, and were you talking about eight apartment units?
Oh yeah, yeah. I was just ballparking, like imagining what the difference is between eight units with a limited number of cars versus office light business that has potentially people coming in and out.
And honestly, in our opinion, it would've been better if there would've been eight large houses or ten large houses built there. And yes, that would create traffic and traffic would have to be dealt with at that point. If they do office light and they bring in office buildings, which I didn't mention earlier that they were talking about second story windows in that ODP or whatever, that's gonna shine, that's gonna come, you know, the lighting, all those things. That's why we wanna talk about it more. Cause it's gonna come right into our backyard. But if they bring in office light, that's gonna create a traffic problem as well. And if there were ever apartments built, there's gonna be many more than eight units in that large area. So that's gonna bring in a traffic problem. So no matter what you do, there is gonna be a traffic problem. There already is a tra-. I was late today because of the traffic problem out there. So there is a traffic problem. Everybody knows that. We've said that.
Yeah.
We're all beating our heads about that. But back to the value, that, that's the reason why. It's, it's just a lot of buzz about not wanting to be backed up to apartment buildings. So people are gonna be moving and, and creating rental properties out of the properties. So.
Thanks. That's helpful context. Chair, is it okay if I ask the developer? I wasn't sure if we were doing a protocol of doing.
Oh, yeah, you can. It looked like he was wanting to come up anyway.
Okay, yeah.
Nick Lombardi, one five one six, South Boston, two fourteen. Tulsa, Oklahoma, seven four one one nine. What question can I answer for you?
Yeah, I was just checking in related to what you all are pursuing and the timeline. Cause I know for instance, you know, and I appreciate that some of the concerned, you know, neighbors are voicing, oh wait, okay, if there's a possibility to continue and have some more conversation, instead of doing like a, a potential no vote or something like that, that they'd be amenable to that. I was just checking on your, your all's timeline for success or feasibility of the project. And if, which I know obviously there's a difference between this being continued versus a no vote versus remanded where that, some of those other options could really extend your timeline significantly. I was just checking on what that kind of feasibility looks like for you or if we were to continue this so that folks got a chance to look at the optional development plan more, what that would look like for you all.
So we first engaged on this property about a year ago.
Okay.
And our impetus for this was a medical office user. And so in between now and then, multifamily and some components has been allowed a use by right in the Tulsa zoning code. And so in our thinking is that in the event we're unable, not able to fill up the entire property with office and knowing where that sector of the economy is right now, that is a high likelihood. This offers us an opportunity to offset some of that medical office with another use, which would create highest and best use for the property. Our thinking also is just as a member of the Tulsa community, we have all come to the realization that housing is a problem, that more units are needed throughout the city. And it's one thing to say that in the macro, in a broad sense. And it's also different when it's in your backyard and I understand that. But ultimately, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And that is something that needs to be a component of a development by right in the zoning code with OL zoning. And is something that can be a successful accessory component to our intended use.
That's a clarifying question.
Yes.
So since the first version of the ODP that we have in front of us allows apartments and condos, but the second version, you know, still has duplexes, cottage housing development, mixed use, but not apartments and condos. And it was verbalized earlier by your representative that you all were amend, amenable to both versions. But are you saying that the second version that says no apartments or condos is not?
Well, condos are form of ownership, so it's not necessarily a difference in what you're building. I think what we're most concerned about is units per acre. And, and if we wanna use that as a benchmark on how to control that, that is certainly something we're amenable to. But as far as having housing as a component of it, I think that's something that is not only important, you know, to protect our downside risk, but also as, as we look at greater development in the Tulsa area, it's probably gotta be a component of most everything.
Okay. So, but our, just double checking. So for this version two, that still has again cottage housing development and a few other three or more household type options on a single lot, but does not have apartments, is that something that affects, like that you do have concerns about and affects your all's feasibility for highest best use?
Obviously, we would like to have the most that we could possibly get. It's, that would be our preference, is to be able to have more than three units on a given lot. Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful.
You bet. Any other questions?
Counselor Dutton has a question. I don't know if it's for you or for him.
Oh, it's for a combination.
Okay.
How many units would you anticipate if there were apartments? Turn your mic on. Sorry. How many units would you anticipate if there were apartments?
I honestly, we haven't even gotten that far.
So.
Yeah.
So there wasn't orthodontist?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
And Montessori?
Uh, we, we had a Montessori user, yes.
Yes, okay. So that would take up how much of the land that you're talking about?
Round numbers, about three acres.
Three acres? And how many acres total are we talking about?
You've got nine and a half total. You've got about seven usable. And that three and a half acres would go down Florence. We would have one more roughly one and a half acre pad side along a hundred and first.
Okay.
So doing the math on that, that would leave us three acres.
Okay.
Of ground.
Okay, so that could also be used for more office or apartments?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
And ideally it'd be office, because office pays better rent.
Right. So the number of units per acre, you mentioned the number three. Is that for the condos that you were talking about?
Correct. Those, that's, that's land that we do not have allocated to a particular use.
Right, right. But if you were to put apartments, say, how mu- how many apartments would you put per acre?
I think, I think we'd be happy with a twelve cap.
Yeah.
Twelve units of the acre as a cap.
Yeah, that's pretty reasonable. Okay, that's all I have for you.
All right.
Oh, I also did want to say that with Montessori schools in a neighborhood, it does increase property values by two point six percent. And because people want to move into a neighborhood that has that higher quality education process, so.
I'll tell that to my banker. Thank you.
Yeah, throw that in there. Okay. And then I had questions for Chelsea Pond. Ms. Reynolds?
Man, you guys are working me over tonight.
We're gonna get your steps in.
Yeah. So I have some questions regarding the trespassing. Do we have records of actual police reports for trespassing?
Well, we have tried to get poli- we, yes, there are records of police reports. We have called the police on a number of occasions for trespassing. So there will be police reports, yes.
There will be or there are?
There are. There, there are police reports existing.
Okay, so what would you say is the average trespass violation during nice seasons weather?
That is difficult for me to say, because I'm not down there all the time.
Okay, so, okay. I can appreciate that.
But what I can see is when I go down, that the fence has been cut, which means somebody has trespassed at least once, probably multiple times. And some homeowners are reticent to call the police. So they may see somebody and not call the police. But police have been called. We do have trespassers.
Okay, I would just be interested in the actual records of trespassing calls to that location.
Would you like me to send those to you?
Um.
And get them, send them to you?
We'll see how this pans out this evening on a vote, if we do take a vote. I would just be interested in that. But thank you. I appreciate that. And I have a question for Vinton over here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it, Ms. Reynolds. Thank you. So my question is, are, is there any traffic data studies that have been conducted in the area that would indicate that there is not viability for this OL use?
I think you folks would know that better than, than me.
Well, I'm just wondering because you guys, you had mentioned.
Tony, are you aware of any? Tony's been around for a long time. He's been on the board longer than I have.
Well, just that traffic issues had been mentioned in the emails.
Well, where we've had studies done all the way around in different areas for years. And they've adjusted lights and they've done, they've added lights and we've done a lot of different things. So there should be, just as she said, there are reports out there and there should be studies out there. I'm with you today, but there definitely have been studies that have been, I don't know if disregarded is the right word.
You have to come speak at the mic if you're gonna, you can keep going if you want to. There are some people who want to hear what you're saying. You're watching. Sorry.
I don't think I can repeat that exactly, but.
Yeah, I know.
There have been studies done. We don't have them with us today, but if you wanted to look, you could see that there's been studies from the creek turnpike all the way around. There's been lights added. There's been, there's been talk about adding lanes and taking away lanes. And literally from the top of the hill, all the way down and around to the creek, there's traffic there. It used to just be during school pickup and after school. Now it's in the evening and on the weekends with soccer and just all the different things that happen around that area. It's really all the time now. But there's definitely traffic studies out there that have been done. And I don't know the results of them, because it's never had any action that I know of taken to correct anything.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Yeah. And then I also have another question. What is the average lot size for the homes that are in that area? Does anybody know?
It's RS three in Delaware Point, so Nathan or Susan can tell us what, is it fifty feet lot width, sixty?
So RS three, Delaware Point to the west is an RS three subdivision, sixty foot minimum wide lots, sixty-nine hundred square foot areas is generally the, the lot pattern in that district.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Chelsea Pond, is that RS three or two or?
I think it may be a PUD also. So it, there, there's probably some nuance there that I'm not really familiar with right now, but.
Yeah, they are wider.
Yeah, maybe a little bigger.
Definitely wider lots.
You should answer the question. I, I can't answer that question, but the lots are bigger in Chelsea Pond than they are in the Delaware Point. And my, my yard is three quarters of an acre. So.
Yep.
Okay. That's about the size of my lot and I live right down the street from a school, so I do understand the traffic, especially with school. But that is just the nature of the beast today with kids having to be picked up specifically by certain parents. It's rare that kids walk to school anymore, so I imagine that's probably quite a bit of the traffic flow that causes issues in neighborhoods. I'm just curious, there's a lot of assumption about apartments and mixed use and families that live in apartments. And I'm really concerned about that narrative, especially during the housing shortage that we have. And it seems discriminatory at best to me. I'm, I, I think we need mixed use housing all over Tulsa, not just defined to specific areas where people might feel comfortable with profiling people that utilize apartments. So I'm, I'm not clear as to what the opposition is about apartments. And we were talking about three acres with maybe, maybe twelve units on those acres each. Even if it was just two acres with twenty-four units, that's still quite reasonable if you have the office, commercial properties that you were also talking about, the investor there. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not convinced that that apartments are a bad thing for families, mixed use.
Well, yeah, we have to, we have to ask you to come up just as a part of protocol does, I, I, I can ask you to come up. So I just wanna make sure nobody else has any questions of anyone. Okay, Strolean? And then we'll move into council discussion, if that's okay.
All I was gonna say is I totally agree about the whole housing thing, affordability, all of that. It's not, it's not that part of it. It's the part that in development, you know, that the way that people do development is that they build the structures and at some point then they sell the structures after they depreciate it out to, and it's just a cycle. You can watch the cycle in apartments. And so that's what challenges some of it is the lack of that part of it is that stuff changes in ownership. So, and in our neighborhood, I've lived in my neighborhood for nineteen years. I mean, I know probably everybody in our neighborhood, they've lived there a long time. And we have younger families coming in because of the kids. So anyway, thank you very much.
No, no, thank you. I can appreciate that. To that point, I am probably not gonna be around when my neighbors decide to sell their house. Or let's just say some people that live down the street in apartments or the apartment owner decides to sell it. I mean, everything's cyclical in my mind. And so I can appreciate wanting to hold on to your property. But again, there are no guarantees that your property's not gonna get sold. You know, so that's just my perspective.
Counselor Archie and then Deckerite.
Yes, I wanna speak to either the developer or the representative of the developer, Mr. Lombardi? Either one. Hey, so I think my, I think the challenge right now in my own mind is when you have development and a community, we wanna work together to come to an amenable solution. Are you saying that, to piggyback off of Counselor Bellis' point, you are amenable to version two, the version two ODP?
We are amenable to it. Our preference would be one.
All right. Are you willing to continue this discussion? I mean, not this discussion, but to press pause on version two and perhaps collaborate with neighbors to get a little bit more feedback about the ODP? And it's just, my, my idea is just, they just found out about this just a few minutes ago. So maybe it's a little, maybe they feel a little flummoxed, just giving them a little bit more time to review version two and perhaps give one or two more pieces of insight that you might be amenable to so that everybody can, can feel good about it going forward, if it's gonna go forward. Are you, what do you think about that?
It's a possibility. It would not be our preference. We've got time constraints on our end with some of the folks that we're building for. And so we would like to be able to push those through and not delay anymore. But we also believe that we've been pretty rational in our concessions and that those have given relief from the code, which already is pretty, pretty favorable towards the neighbors, we believe.
That's all, okay. I appreciate that. That's my question.
Counselor Deckerite?
Thank you. Are we still in comments or are we in discussion?
Oh, we can move to council discussion. Everybody done with questions?
Yeah, that would be awesome. I mean, I'm ready to discuss. And thank you for everyone who's spoken and to our colleagues who have hosted community meetings. I just wanted to echo the sentiments shared by Counselor Dutton. I wanna make sure we're not maligning renters or even people that like to live in more densely constructed housing. We have a housing crisis in Tulsa in large part because we have for decades restricted development to single family residences. I'd also just like to say that even right now, how the property's zoned RS three and AG, there could be housing on it as it exists right now, and that could all be rental housing. You look to Jinx and you look to Bixby, they're doing full. You look to Jinx and you look to Bixby, they're doing full developments of single family houses that are all rental. So some people just don't know if they're staying in Tulsa long enough to make the investment. Some people can't qualify for the mortgage at the rates they are right now. Some people, uh, might be here on a temporary assignment and just want a house to live in. There's all kinds of reasons that people like to rent. And there's all kinds of reasons that people like to rent at every, uh, price point and size of housing. So I really want to be careful because our, um, goal that we discussed ad nauseam earlier today is to get to those thirteen thousand units. They're not all gonna be single family, um, purchased homes in this city. So, uh, for, for the neighbors that are here today and the neighbors that are gonna come before us for the next zoning, um, it's just gonna be something we have to deal with. And just full disclosure, I live at ninety first and Mingo in a very well-established neighborhood um, that for a long time was just surrounded by Meadow Brook and undeveloped areas. And in the last twenty years, we have gone from being on the edge of town, um, feeling very suburban and almost rural in some ways to really being in a major, major corridor now. And so I, I understand the heartburn that I'm hearing from you all. I live in a well-established neighborhood where I've lived for fourteen years with original owners who bought, you know, their plan and their plot, their, their land. So, um, I appreciate the ODP, um, offer. I do agree that it feels quite late at the eleventh hour. And it, um, I appreciate, I saw my colleagues take time out of other things we're supposed to be doing today to like kind of get around the table and have the conversation. But it does seem like at this point for me that it's not unreasonable to do a continuance so that you all could go back to community, have this conversation, um, maybe amplify that at RS three and ag. Housing can go in right now if the zoning didn't change at all. Um, and also get a better sense of those three remaining acres that are still up in the air. It sounds like potentially that wouldn't be office use or commercial. You know, what kind of housing is really reasonable or acceptable? I, I think about the, what's in front of us and the, um, the height allowance and then the window restriction, right? If that's housing, that's gonna be very different than if it's an office with restricted cell heights. The, um, six foot above the finished floor, um, certainly not impossible to do. But for housing, it's gonna be different than if it was an office. And so I say all this because I've gone through a similar rezoning with the same restrictions and it was existing, um, higher end homes, quite close to commercial development. And we got that concession in, um, but I can't imagine what that would be like if it were for housing. So I, I think that would be a discussion. Um, so that's where I'm at on it. I, I do appreciate this push-pull that we're having between we need more housing. There's not a lot of undeveloped land in these very, um, desirable corridors. You're right across from a major school that families want to be in, um, that teachers shouldn't have to, you know, live way out of town and commute in on their salary because they can't afford to live close to the, the students they serve. So obviously some affordable rental housing would be a good idea. Um, but we also need to balance out all of these things that we've been talking about today. So I'm inclined and I don't, I'm looking to my colleagues who have been leading this to just continue it to a date certain. But I don't know how long you all think you need to engage with the public. I know we have some other community meetings scheduled.
Yeah, do you want me to respond?
Yeah.
Um, I, I think it'll take three to four weeks.
Okay.
You know, and, and just so everybody knows, we, we had this conversation three months ago to try to put the ODP in place. We emailed a synopsis of the ODP elements on January the twenty ninth. And then, um, requested again in early March, some kind of analysis of the ODP. And we never got a response until yesterday, really. And so I'm, I'm very aware of the timing issues, but we were very cognizant on the front end trying to help the developers with the timing so that they could get the ODP in place or at least negotiated before we got to this place. So now we're just delaying it by another month because the work wasn't done in the last three months. So, yeah, I would, I would support going, um, no later than a month. And then having this same discussion, hopefully, you know, come back with some recommendations by the collective body of the individuals from the homeowners associations who are here tonight. If you want to volunteer, anybody who's representing a home or homeowner, um, as volunteers to meet with the developers and the developers' council.
So considering our holiday schedule and everything else, that's looking like, would you want to bring it back to committee before we take it back up?
I, I think you can bring it maybe on the same day.
Okay, so that's either, yeah, April thirtieth or May seventh.
Counselor Archie.
Counselor Archie.
I didn't ask, um, Mr. Lombardi, um, what yours, your time schedule would be. I, I definitely want to respect the fact that you say, you know, time is money and it's important. I wouldn't mind it being on, on the thirtieth, you know, which would be sooner than, than May. Okay, he, he gives a thumbs up.
Okay, so if every, I'm hearing consensus that.
Are you okay with, you, you had your hand up though. I want to give you time. Okay.
I'd like to, oh, Counselor Mingle.
Counselor.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I was ready to make a motion, but.
Sorry.
So in this, in this conversation, we talked about previously about OL and where we would end up some point at this discussion about, uh, multifamily. It seems, um, deceitful if you know this is what you're gonna develop, that you should apply for RM zoning. So even though, yes, we did vote for it, we knew this was, that zoning was gonna pass. So that's not relevant to the conversation. The issue to me is the undercurrent that I hear about multifamily. I will tell you as the representative of my own district, uh, this seems okay for you to move into my district. So the issues that you talk about trespassing, crime and things, my view is with some of the statements you talk about, about property values and things of that nature. I would suggest that the apartments or the, uh, multifamily dwellings that would be in the locations that border your communities or your, uh, housing developments would be well above what the market would be in my district or even council district three or even council district one. So I'm not supportive of people who don't want multifamily, who think it's okay in my district or it should be pushed to other places. Um, as you stated before, sir, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. So what I don't support is deception. So if your intent is to, um, create multifamily development, my ask is that you be forthright and you apply for that type of zoning. Cause I will fully support that, um, simply because those apartments would be at most likely market level that would be well beyond most people's, uh, affordability. The other thing is, is the ODP, um, I don't think there's anything in here other than, I think the screening and stuff like this. I think version two, which I think you said Nathan was your version, correct? Okay, so this one, other than the apartment complex or the multifamily, uh, is the, seems pretty reasonable. So version one, the comparative difference is it seems like there's some stuff that's removed out of that. Version two would be what I would agree with, but if you're rezoning the property for resale, that's where I have a problem. So I, I want the neighbors to understand what's being here. But if it is multifamily and that's the intent, I would ask that you file for rezoning of RM. That's all.
Good point. Um, I will say that whenever this comes back, that this is helpful guidance, but it's, it's a lot of information for us to intake, uptake whenever we're at the dais. Um, so when it comes back next time, we'll have a, if there's a side-by-side comparison that is necessary, then we will. Hopefully what we have is something that everybody can say, yep, we'll support that. Counselor Dutton and then Bellis.
Yeah, I'll make mine quick. Um, what I wanted to do was just kind of describe, uh, apartment users that are travelers as well, that still need apartments and not necessarily homes. Um, we have traveling nurses, we have actors, we have English teachers, we have flight attendants, we have pilots. So to indicate multifamily apartment use would be a specific kind of family or person. Um, I think to, uh, Counselor Director Wright's point that, um, we can't stigmatize and malign people that utilize apartments because they would be in an area that would be probably more, less affordable for people that might be in my area. But they would still need apartments. So that's, that's all I had to say.
Yeah, I'm gonna take a more free market conservative approach to my answer, actually. No, this, I do want to, um, acknowledge or just ensure, like, I think it sounds like we're all in agreement about a potential likely vote around, uh, what sounds like a pretty sensible continuance. I just did want to say, um, to my council colleague, Counselor Bengal, respectfully, I disagree with, I understand that for this developer, when we made that change to office light, which we do have other forms of, um, zoning where the name may say something and it may not be a hundred percent obvious until you read the code, the other things that are within it like ag and, you know, cannabis or things like that and what can come in. Um, that I understand from, you know, a developer angle, that when you're looking at viability and feasibility, um, you know, office light gives you an array of oper, of, of opportunity when it comes to mixed use of a development and things like that, that can be best for creating, you know, both a vibrant structure for feasibility of your project, all sorts of things like that. So I can understand or like, I don't want to, you know, assume a certain like deception implicit in that, that, um, by just saying, oh, you know, I'm pursuing office light and it could also potentially have this. I don't think that's inherently deceptive. I just think that sounds like a kind of, you know, just a business approach of, hey, if that's another thing that I can do, then that's a thing I'm going to explore as it probably has good financial outcomes. Um, and I do want to reemphasize that I think when I think of, um, multifamily or some of those opportunities in office light, we know the scale of that is very limited because it still has certain height restrictions. Um, but then also that with some of those other concerns that have come into play, whether it's traffic or otherwise, that that may not be that different than the myriad businesses that can go in. So I just wanted to offer that framing.
I think the point though that I was making is that if you know that's what you intend to develop there, that you just rezone for that specifically.
But if you want to have.
It's not that I, it, that's the intent is here is that the community. Yeah, the community has certain concerns. And so if there's already a zoning option for multifamily, that would be the most logical choice.
Can multi-family include offices?
Especially if you're just preparing the property for sale.
Yeah.
Right? And that, and it makes it more attractive for resale. That's the problem that I have here because then the neighbors are subject to whatever is done by right and they don't have a say after that, after the zoning is passed. And that's where my challenge is. So deceptive may have been a bad choice of words, um, but I think you understood the spirit of the state, of the statement.
I did. We can, yeah, we can talk more on the offline.
Counselor Director Wright.
Thank you. I'll just add, I'm glad that we amended office light to help us solve our housing crisis. But I appreciate the dialogue now that it's actually come before us in a real world situation. Um, I'm gonna move to continue this item, which I lost on my paper.
Five C.
Five C to Wednesday, April thirtieth, in this very room at five PM. Nope.
Who's second? Counselor Bush? Please call the roll.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Director Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Fine.
Okay, this item has been continued until five o'clock PM on April the thirtieth in this room. So for those of you who are here and chose to spoke, speak. It's been a long day. Um, we'll get with you and then we'll get with the developer and we'll find a time to, to meet either via Zoom or in person to see if we can work some of these last little issues out, okay? All right. Thank you all very much. Item six, first reading, the following items in the section of the agenda will not be read aloud and without objection, items six A through E will be forwarded to the next council meeting for action. Seven ordinances, second reading, A ordinance admitting title eleven. B Tulsa revised ordinances titled solid waste management, chapter five, solid waste rates and deposits. And it changes green waste disposal fees for commercial customers. B ordinance closing a portion of the public way requested at nine nine oh seven South one hundred, one hundredth East Place. It's for an existing retaining wall. Do we have any speakers on seven A or B?
We have no speakers.
Okay, council discussion.
Move to approve items seven A and B with the emergency clause on seven A.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Director Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Items seven A through B are approved with emergency clause on seven A. Council items, do we have any announcements? Yes.
I would just like to encourage, um, anyone who has capacity to serve as a crossing guard. The city of Tulsa is seeking applicants for the morning and the afternoon shifts. And likewise, Union Public Schools are looking for school bus drivers. And so, um, if you have the time and the heart to serve families, um, Union just announced that they're going to have eight days between now and the end of the school year where they cannot bus children. And so that is impacting families. So if you know of somebody, um, who might be interested in becoming a school bus driver, please reach out to Union Public Schools. And if you're, if you know somebody who might be interested in helping, uh, keep children safe as they travel to and from school, um, please contact the city of Tulsa to serve as a crossing guard. Thanks.
Counselor Archie?
Uh, yes, everybody, uh, in the sixty first and Peoria area, please mark your calendars for April the eighth. Uh, Counselor Bush and I will be having a neighborhood meeting at, uh, concerning Graham Park. Come and give your, uh, feedback as to how you want us to improve that park. We're gonna be meeting at six thirty at Spirit Life Church, uh, that's on Peoria. That's, um, April the eighth at six thirty PM. Join us.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yep, um, so it's a new month. That means that Tulsa District Five will have our monthly meeting on April eighth from six to seven, Tulsa Tech, uh, Limley Campus there at thirty second-ish in Memorial. Um, in the Client Services Building, uh, we will have, um, engineering, um, out there to talk about, um, projects going on in the district, uh, from the different capital improvement packages. We'll also have the planning, um, office out there to give us information and also bring your ideas to be considered for our, uh, District Five, um, million dollars within the, um, Improve Our Tulsa Three.
So competing meetings, is that what I hear? So should we wager on who's gonna have more, either.
It should be, it should be a fun, are there a fun, is there a fun index that we have? I think the ones about the park might be ranked a little higher, but I, I like, I like the Limley Campus.
A crackle or something like that.
I'm sorry, but we always have a packed room.
That's good.
Standing room only.
Let's do it.
I love it.
All right, anything else? None new business? There is none. No hearing of appeals, hearing of public comments. This concludes the televised portion of our meeting for.